All right. We're ready to go. We're on the video record. Everybody can calm down. All right, we're good to go. We've got a quorum. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the City Council's special study session for the meeting of Tuesday, April 22, 2024. I now call the meeting to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Mr. Mayor, the record will reflect that all council is present.
Good. Okay, can you please read the title?
I'm reading the title. I'm sorry. This is the study session for fiscal year 2025-26, proposed capital improvement program budget in five-year, 2025 to '26, to 2029 to '30, CIP study session presentation by Ms. Molina, Finance Director.
Okay, good. So for the public, Ms. Molina is going to make the presentation, and then we're going to hear public comments after that. Public comments will be two minutes, like a normal study session. Okay. Carol, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, dear council members. Tonight, we are going to present to you the proposed capital improvement program budget for fiscal year '25-'26. Just as a reminder, it actually came up a couple of times in some of our committees, where the City Council would probably be beneficial to kind of put into context the full budget. So we wanted to present to you where the '24-'25 are current adopted budget, what it looks like, and some of the breakdowns within it. So as a reminder, the '24-'25 adopted budget, which is the current fiscal year we're in, that started July 1st and will end June 30th of this year, the all-funds number is about $240 million. As you can see, 59% of it is salaries and benefits. 11% is set aside for the capital projects. However, our general fund makes up $189.9 million of that. 133 million, 70% of it, is attributed solely to salaries and benefits. 23% is maintenance and operations, which is mostly made up of our professional services contracts, office supplies, training, budget, and so forth. Some of our fixed assets of $2.9 million and our transfers out, which is mostly the CAN, which goes towards both our IT replacement fund as well as our capital fund. So as you can see here, our total general fund pie of $189.9 million, over 52% is dedicated toward our public safety. As you can see, fire and rescue makes up almost 20% of the total pie, whereas the police department is close to 33%. Some of our other departments are a lot less, as far as percentage-wise, you can see anywhere from the city attorney being less than 1%, finance at 3%, Public Works is one of our largest ones at 12%, still not close to the public safety departments. So if you can see here, we kind of try to break down what, by department, how much dollars each were attributed to in the current fiscal year's adopted budget. You can see how the police department and the fire department make up over 33% of the pie. However, as mentioned in our media study session, there is approximately about $6 million in shortfall this year. $3.6 million is what we're asking to reduce. $2.9 of it is coming from capital. Some things we were able to realign internally. For example, we took down the $1 million towards our Fire Station 2 bond, since we are not anticipating that bond payment in the current fiscal year. We are anticipating that bond payment in '25-'26. And the other $1.8 million of that savings that we internally were able to manage was directed towards salary savings. So the question of the CAN came up. As you know, the city's municipal code requires that the city set aside approximately 5% of our general fund revenue towards the 401 Fund. However, we are utilizing the $2.8 million towards the debt payment of the Lyons project for approximately about $6.8 million. Staff for the current year, as you know, is requesting a partial waiver of the CAN to help address the balance of that, which is about $3.6 million. The waiver of the CAN does require a supermajority vote, which means we would need at least five city council members to vote in favor of the waiver. At this point, I will send it over to Director Seth Raman for the CIP.
Thank you, Ms. Molina. So Mr. Mayor and council members, before we get into the CIP, I want to acknowledge a few members of the staff, as well as I want to acknowledge City Manager Lorraine Farrell-Harrison, or all the directors, including Finance Director Carol Molina, as well as other directors in helping us with the CIP process. This is as part of the overall budget process. Within Public Works, I want to acknowledge our managers from the four different divisions, as well as our analysts, Ann Abaka and Christine Seau. With that, as I mentioned, there are five divisions totally, including the admin division, which is primarily myself and a couple of our analysts and executives assistant. Our engineering division is led by Sung Yang, City Engineer. And Engineering Division is responsible for many functions, as listed here. They're responsible for the street and parkway improvements that we see, storm drain improvements, all the permit processing, development permits, development review, as it relates to Public Works. Then our General Services, that's led by our Deputy Public Works Director, Patrick Bauer. And General Services is responsible for fleet and facility maintenance, as well as capital projects that are associated with facilities. Transportation Services is led by Paul Martin, recently hired Transportation Services Manager. And their functions include active transportation, traffic operations, planning, and also processing of permits. Our Maintenance Services is led by Rob Ryan, and they are responsible for all the street cleaning functions, graffiti, maintenance, parks, tree, parks and parkways, as well as trees. With that, let's talk about the CIP budget. The CIP, again, I just want to point out, before we get to the CIP, while today's focus is all on CIP, I just want to point out that the percentage of work that Public Works do for CIP is maybe 30%. A lot of it goes towards the maintenance of all the streets, infrastructure, the day-to-day operations of the department. So the CIP budget, unlike operations budget, the CIP budget is financed from multiple funding sources. Federal, state, county, local funds contribute towards this. We have a lot of funds that have restrictions, which means we can use them only for a specific type of project. For example, I cannot use gas tax to fund a park project. It's not allowed by the state law. Same thing, I cannot use a parks fund development project on a street or a facility project. So there are specific restrictions for some of these funding. And they all involve oversight. We go through audits every year. OCTA audits us on their projects. Any funding we get from OCTA, they audit us. Same thing with all the federal projects. Caltrans audits us, go through all the books, make sure that we are doing it appropriately. And that's why we coordinate with all the departments, our City Attorney's Office. We work a lot with Finance in these implementation of all these projects. And I put that last amount, the $30,000, so that is a limit for a project to show up on our CIP list. Smaller projects are done as operating projects, and they are done outside of the CIP process. So by definition, CIP is a multi-year program, which means our operating funds, every year we spend on that particular year, and anything that's left, you know, becomes zero, and we start again on July 1. Whereas CIP, if a project is funded as a CIP, it stays as a CIP until the project is done and we remove the project from the list and give the funds back to the originating fund source. Typically, a lot of these CIP projects are not completed in the same fiscal year. There are smaller projects that get done, of course, but when you talk about complex, large projects, they go through multiple phases. They go through design, outreach, environmental sometimes, and then we go through construction, contract bidding process. And then we go through the construction phase, and then we close out. So all these are important functions of a CIP project, and that's why it takes a longer time to complete larger CIP projects. Again, our CIP projects do get recognized almost every year. Just want to point out, just a couple days ago, we received word that our Adams-Pine Creek project, which is almost completed, is getting an award. So it's happy to announce that, and we're looking forward to that function. With that, I just want to quickly have staff talk about some of our CIP accomplishments.
Thank you, Mr. Seth Raman. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam, and honorable members of the City Council. My name is Sung Yang, and I'm your City Engineer, and it was great pleasure to introduce to you some of the projects we did in the past fiscal year in 2024-25. First step at bat is the Citywide Street Improvement Project, which also includes parkway improvements and slurry seal projects underway. Currently, this project is currently underway, and we're doing a full complement of street improvements throughout the city of Costa Mesa, which includes grind and overlay reconstruction, slurry seal, and all types of concrete parkway rehabilitation, such as sidewalks, curbs and gutters, and curb ramps. For this particular project, we're looking at approximately 10.1 lane miles, or 53,451 lineal feet of improvements, which is equivalent to the length of the I-405 from the 22 freeway to the 73 freeway, to give you an idea of the magnitude and scope of this project. As you can see on your presentation slides, some of the neighborhoods that we're improving are Mesa Verde, Mesa North, Mesa Del Mar, Bristol West, College Park, West Side, and East Side. And this is an effort to maintain our Payment Condition Index, or PCI, at around 85 or better. So this is a very significant project in terms of scope. It's about $92 million, and the sources of funding are Capital Improvement Fund, or CIP Fund, the Measure M2 Fair Share, and also gas tax. So the next project is the Adams Avenue Rehabilitation. This project is completed. The limits of this project is from the Center Anna River to Royal Palm Drive, and also on Royal Palm Drive from Adams Avenue to Elm Avenue. It's a full street rehabilitation project, and in so doing, consistent with our Active Transportation Plan, we improved bicycle facilities. It's funded by RMRA, which is the Road Maintenance Rehabilitation Account Fund, and it is our, we're proud to say, is our first project administered by the Community Workforce Agreement, or CWA. And with that, I'll take it to Mr. Rob Ryan, our Maintenance Services Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members, Rob Ryan, Maintenance Services Manager. The first project up is the LED upgrades at various locations, sports fields in Bark Park. This is thanks in large part, or in part, in whole, to a grant from then State Senator Dave Min, now Congressman Dave Min. It was completed in August of 2024. Each site had site-specific plans for the type of sport played there, the technology-optimized visibility of the ball in aerial sports, creating a higher contrast between the ball and the sky, which allows athletes to better track the ball and the play. It minimizes light pollution, as you can see from the before and after photos. There's a markedly increased amount of light on the playing surface, but no light pollution into the nearby homes, which minimizes the effects on them, as well as birds and other critters that rely on the darkness to forage food. So everything is focused on the playing surface. That lighting came with a 25-year warranty on parts and labor. That warranty helps with the maintenance costs. So along with that warranty, it increases efficiency, minimizes downtime, and reduces maintenance and energy costs by as much as 85% over the life of those lights. The total project cost was about $2.6 million. The next project is the Tennis Center Improvements. We resurfaced completely courts number 1 through 10, including the ceiling of the expansion joints, cracks and joints repair. I applied a Sportmaster surfacing. It's a mix of paint and silica sand that optimizes ball speed and playability. The color scheme was also updated, which provides a more modern and aesthetically pleasing look to the courts. One of the big highlights of this project was we were able to convert courts 10 and, or 11 and 12 into eight regulation-sized pickleball courts, included brand-new nets and additional fencing that separates the eight courts. With that, I will turn it over to Deputy Director Bauer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam, and council members. My name is Patrick Bauer. I'm the manager for General Services Division. Some of our accomplishments the last year were the Police Department range remodel. We replaced the range targeting systems, put in new baffling wall systems, replaced the existing air infiltration systems, and we also improved the elevator unit, allowing for more accessibility. Another successful project was the Information Technology Office remodel, right across the hallway here. We added additional office space, replaced flooring, like light fixtures, new painting, two permanent offices and a bunch of cubicles, and optimized their workstations in there to allow for more space for the staff. And then finally, we're excited and anticipated the opening of our Lyons Park Cafe over by the library. That will include a walk-up concession counter, a full commercial kitchen complement inside, and it's estimated to be completed at the end of next month. And this was partially funded courtesy of County ARPA funds through Supervisor Foley. And with that, I will pass along to Paul Martin.
Good evening. Again, I'm Paul Martin, the new Transportation Services Manager. So I get to talk about all the great work the team has delivered. This starts with the Clean Mobility Options, this new fair, free demand ride-share program serving the West Side area and parts of College Park. This also is grant-funded and currently has three vehicles in service for free ride-share for the community. This is a supplement to our typical fixed route bus system that is run by OCTA. The team also has delivered wave hunting signs for people bicycling throughout the community. This wave hunting supplements the network that we already have in the city and really highlights the destinations, the distance, as well as the time it might take if you're riding via bicycle. So 116 signs designed here at the city and implemented for the various communities and areas of the city shown there. And as Rajah mentioned, the award-winning Adams Avenue-Pine Creek Drive intersection improvements. We just heard it receive the award. We are doing final touches. If you've driven by today, the slurry seal improvements were going in, and all the final paint and bits and pieces on the checklist will be done in the next week or two. This is on the north side of Orange Coast College and really strengthens the pedestrian and bicycle crossing in that area. Either east-west along Adams or north-south crossing Adams along Pine Creek includes various things like crosswalks, new pedestrian pass, stronger trails for people bicycling off the street, the ADA improvements, and as I mentioned, nearly complete with construction. I'll hand it back over to the director.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. So for the '24-'25 budget, so as we are working on this, as Dr. Molina mentioned, that there will be a request for a partial waiver of the CAN capital asset needs ordinance in order to address revenue shortfall. So while we took care of some portion of the revenue shortfall through other means, there is still $3.6 million that need to be adjusted using a combination of differing capital projects, as well as moving some of the street sweeping expenses from general fund to gas tax. So $0.7 million in that for street sweeping to gas tax, and $2.9 million in temporary deferals of approved capital projects. And these are the initial proposed recommendations. These were shared with you at the March study session, and at that time, you directed us to go to get input from the Five Pack Committee. So the staff did go to Five Pack. So we presented it at their April meeting. And so the Five Pack made these recommendations. They supported the waiving of the CAN ordinance for '24-'25, and they supported most of the projects, except they identified three that they want to not defer, which are the City Hall cast iron drain re-pipe at $254,000, City Hall air handler on the fifth floor at $140,000, and the heater replacement at $350,000. So and then they directed, or they gave it to staff to find replacement projects. And then while staff presented the '25-'26 CIP, they deferred action on that to the May meeting for consideration, along with the operating budget. So following that, staff took a look at the recommendations from Five Pack, and we proposed this as an alternative list of projects. We want to still continue to keep the cast iron drain re-pipe as a deferred project, but we also, we added the sewer line improvement at $250,000 and the senior center improvements at $250,000. Just want to point out, for the sewer line, most of the repairs that are required at the City Hall have been completed, so there is nothing within the building that needs to be done. This is to take the sewer line project outside the City Hall towards the main line, and this can be deferred at this time. It's not an immediate need for that one. As for the senior center improvements, this is earmarked primarily to do some refurbishments of the senior center in terms of paint and carpet and other cosmetic improvements. And staff felt that, you know, due to the impending Jamboree Housing project, it may be better to defer this for a couple of years so that, you know, it can be done as the project getting, as the Jamboree project is getting completed, so that the whole place will get a better look at that time. So this again adds up to the same approximately $2.9 million as requested by our Finance Department for meeting the shortfall. I just want to point out, attachment one in your staff report is, has a full listing of all the projects, including, so we identified some projects that are underway, some projects that are yet to start in a different color, and also projects that were completed. So you have a full listing of projects there. For, if you have any questions, we can answer about them. And here is a list, is a partial list of some of the major projects. So our next steps for '24-'25 is on May 6, staff will bring an agenda item for your formal consideration on these actions. One is a partial waiver of the CAN ordinance for '24-'25. Reduce general fund transfer to capital improvement fund in the amount of $2.9 million, and allocate $0.7 million for street sweeping purposes. And also to, you know, as part of your action, you can also direct that all these deferred projects get the priority in '26-'27 fiscal year. So at this point, before I jump into '25-'26, do you want, do you have any questions, or you want to move on to finish the presentation?
I think you should go ahead and finish it, then we'll do the public comment, then we'll do the questions.
Sounds good. So now we are at '25-'26. So the projects, you know, we identify projects based on City Council established priorities, goals, objectives. We get input from commissions, committee, and community in different forums and get their feedback. We have our own staff that looks at our city infrastructure and facility needs and come up with a list of projects. We have departments that come to us with projects, as well as we consider the budget, what can we afford with, you know, what we forecast to have. So these are considered in coming up with a list of projects. Again, based on our forecast of revenues, there will be, staff will be requesting a full waiver of the CAN ordinance. So in this one, staff will still have some general fund monies, but not through CAN, but from capital reserves. And we want to make sure that because it is a general fund requirement to meet the maintenance of effort. So Measure M2 and gas tax both have this requirement that the city uses those revenues not as a replacement of general fund, but as a supplement to general fund. So they looked at our general fund expenditures back when Measure M got approved, and they use the same ratio every, you know, as we go along. Our revenues, this much revenues has to be expended using general fund. For the current fiscal year, it's almost $9.8 million. Now, the $9.8 million includes not just projects, it includes staff time, it includes all our maintenance activities, pretty much all the functions of Transportation Department, for example. All the general fund expenditures that go towards Transportation Department is eligible for the maintenance of effort. So we add up all that to come up with what's needed. But even with that, we need some allocation from general fund towards capital to meet the MOE. So just as a quick fact, we have 23 projects that are recommended, of which the total amount of CIP is 28.7. To note that, I just want to note that $12 million of that is actually bond financing for Fire Station. So here is a listing of all the projects. As I mentioned, we get funding from a variety of sources, and they are listed here. And our biggest funding source for this upcoming year is also grants. We received several grants from state and federal sources equalling $6.9 million. So that's a big portion of our CIP for next year. This is hard to see, but this is an attachment in your report also. And these are the 23 projects that are being recommended. Just here are the categories of the CIPs that are being recommended. As you can see, facilities have the highest share of 42.6%, but again, $12 million of that, $12.25, is the bond financing. Parks has $1.9 Parks has 1.9% of $550,000. While that is low, just want to point out that we currently have over $18 million of ongoing park projects at this time. Many of them will be under construction in the upcoming fiscal year. We have streets at 7.4 million, primarily funded by grants. Again, this one has a lot of restricted funds. Streets have RMRA, this is the road maintenance account, gas tax that account for significant share of this, as well as Measure M fair share funding. The transportation has almost 30%, again, funded by grants or restricted funds. Again, the bulk of the $6.9 million is in the transportation category. With this, I just want to highlight few key projects. Again, I'll go to staff to provide this highlight.
Good evening, Patrick again. Fire Station 2 reconstruction, this, most of you are familiar with this project. We currently have a Station 2 over on Baker Street that's over 50 years old. We're increasing the size to around 9,400 square feet. We're improving operational function, living quarters, enlarging the apparatus bay with anticipation for future growth. We're incorporating a conference room, utility room, upgraded exercise room, medical supply storage. And then also with essential services, it's important, obviously, that we need to continue those services while we build the new buildings. So it also includes an onsite temporary living and operation quarters onsite while we do the construction.
The next project is citywide tree maintenance and public right of ways. It's a new project that will provide enhanced maintenance to specific median and parkway trees that are susceptible to the effect of the recent unprecedented weather events that we've experienced locally.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. So from the engineering division for the upcoming fiscal year '25, '26, we are proposing the Harbor Boulevard rehabilitation project. This street rehabilitation project is along Harbor Boulevard, and the limits are between MacArthur Boulevard to South Coast Drive and also from Geisler Avenue to Baker Street. The funding for this project will be from our road maintenance and rehabilitation account from the state RMRA funds, which is similar to gas tax. And the amount of the allocation for this is close to $3 million.
Just want to point out here that the Harbor Boulevard between South Coast Drive and Geisler is going to be done by OCTA as part of the 405 project. They need, still need to do that repair.
Thank you. The next project is our annual project, which is the citywide street improvements project, which again involves parkway repairs and also slurry seal. For this one, the scope of this project is a little bit smaller. It's going to be around $4.1 million. But it's all in an effort to maintain our pavement condition index to be 85 or better. And these improvements will consist of all city council districts as we do each and every year. Thank you. So I'll direct this to Paul Martin, our transport services manager.
Hello again. On the transportation side, the Adams Avenue Active Transportation Improvement Project is on the western end between the Santa Ana River and Royal Palm Drive. This utilizes a federal grant to go ahead and enhance the facility for both bicyclists and pedestrians on both sides of the roadway. The travel lanes would remain for car traffic, but on the outside edges, a lot of improvements there. This is using that federal grant and consistent, of course, with the general plan as well as the active transportation plan. This will sound similar. Adams Avenue, in this case, between Fairview and Harbor, also making bicycle and pedestrian improvements in that area. Very busy area. Again, we're at the northern edge of OCC, using federal grant funding for construction, consistent again with the general plan and active transportation plan. And this, of course, feeds into and lines up with the intersection improvements at Adams and Pine Creek. And then Fairview Road on that eastern edge of Orange Coast College, again, active transportation improvements, in this case between Fair Drive and Adams Avenue. There's heavy transit usage, so there's a lot of coordination with the transit stop improvements and bicycle and pedestrian travel and traffic signal improvements. And again, this is one of those projects funded with a lot of grant funds that have been secured. Lastly, we secured a grant with the federal government for the Pedestrian Safety Festival. This is an idea that would close Harbor Boulevard from Newport Boulevard to West 19th to auto car traffic. This would provide an opportunity for a pedestrian safety festival and an opportunity to really explore how we use that roadway and plan to occur on four different dates with this next year using that grant. I'll hand it back over to the director.
So we took the CIP, the one-year and the five-year CIP pertaining to parks, and we went to the PAX Commission on April 10th. So PAX concurred with the staff recommendation for the parks projects, which are very limited for the upcoming fiscal year, but they requested allocation of $250,000 for West Side Park development in the upcoming fiscal year as well as for future fiscal years. Just want to point out, there is no funding identified at this time for that project. Also, the West Side Park development is an existing project, and we have currently unspent funds of $250,000 in that project account. Now, the other document that is an attachment for you is the five-year CIP. And this year, we looked at the five-year CIP in a little bit more detail. And we want to almost go through a process of making it more realistic in terms of funding. So a lot of the projects where the funding were moved to future fiscal years, we know that there is no grant or anything available in '25, '26, '27, or '27, '28. So we kind of adjusted it to make sure that it's as realistic as possible. And while we update this annually, we want to make sure that we pay particular attention to this for planning purposes. And to that effect, you know, consulted budget last year, facility needs assessment study and park assessment study. And both studies are, you know, the facility needs assessment is actually underway right now. We have a contract that was awarded by council, so we started that study already. The park assessment study, we are in the procurement process. We should have that underway shortly. We think both of these studies will be done by early next year and will feed into our budget process in the '26, '27 timeframe. These two studies will give us a good understanding of future needs for both facilities and parks, and we can budget accordingly based on the needs and priorities at that time. So the next steps. So the '25, '26 operating and capital budget has to be approved by the city council, adopted by the city council by June 30th. So the proposed CIP, as a summary, provides a total of $28.7 million from multiple funding sources to improve city infrastructure in all areas. In addition to, just want to point out, we, you know, while the projects may look very small for the next CIP, we have 102 ongoing or yet to start projects. The total approximately $93 million. So our staff will be very busy, and there'll be a lot of work happening between now and the next few years, actually. And the one-year waiver of general fund transfer for CAN provides a method for reducing general fund expenses, and, you know, we do that so that we don't impact other core city services. With that, here is a calendar. So today, April 22nd, here we are with the CIP study session. And then in May, we have several meetings scheduled, as well as we are looking for the fund adoption by June 30th. With that, we are ready to answer any questions.
Okay, let's hear from the public. Public comment at this time. First in the chambers, two minutes, and then on the Zoom. Yes, Flo, you have the floor.
When Katrina Foley appointed me to the Bike Way and Walkability Committee 10 years ago, I stated at the committee's first meeting that Costa Mesa was in the Stone Age regarding active transportation facilities. At that point, 2015, as part of a tandem cycling team with my beloved Joe, I had biked the Santa Cruz Mountains, the cities of Santa Cruz and Capitola, all of the Monterey Bay, all of the South Bay, and all of the OC. During these 10 years, Costa Mesa has become a nirvana for active transportation. A friend who lives in Irvine and who leads up the Strong Towns OC recently expressed envy to me, yes, envy, at all the wonders that our public works department has brought about. The CIP draft attachment three, transportation section, says it all. Thank you, Rajah.
Thank you, Flo. Let's go over on this side. Yes, ma'am.
Buenas noches, representantes y presentes.
Excuse me for a second. Excuse me for a second. So for, for people that are using Spanish to English translation, let's give them four minutes, okay? So you have cuatro minutos.
Buenas noches a todos, representantes aquí presentes y a toda la gente que aquí nos está escuchando. Mi nombre es María Teresa López.
Good evening to all the representatives and all the people who are... Good evening to all...
Excuse me for a second. Let's pause the time. Let's make sure we have the technology squared away.
Good evening to all the representatives and all the people who have shown here tonight. My name is María Teresa. Soy del distrito... López. Soy del distrito cuatro, vivo en Costa Mesa, exactamente entre la Placencia y la Center. Tenemos, aquí les traigo 125 firmas de las personas que tenemos, queremos un proyecto de un paso peatonal. I come from District Four in Costa Mesa. I live between Placencia and Center, and I brought you here 125 signatures from people who are requesting a new walkway. Por qué lo queremos? Porque han pasado accidentes y muertes, y queremos seguridad para que las personas pasen con más tranquilidad para el paso, para alcanzar el autobús. Permítame. And we are requesting a new pedestrian walkway. The reason why we're requesting this is because there's been a lot of deaths and accidents, and we're asking this so that people can have a safer and easier access to get to their bus stop. Y les agradecería mucho que nos escucharan esta petición, ya que esto nos haría mucha ayuda para todas las personas que ya no se pasen por ahí, para que no corran peligro. And I want to thank you for listening to us, for listening to our petition. This will really help a lot of people so that they can get through that section and they can get through it safely. Soy del grupo de Costa Mesa Unidos, y agradezco a todos, a Costa Mesa Unidos, de El Nuevo Callejón y a nuestro concejal y a todos ustedes presentes. Muchísimas gracias. I am here from Costa Mesa Unidos, and I want to thank Costa Mesa Unidos and everyone here present and council members for hearing me tonight, and thank you.
Buenas tardes a cada una de ustedes. Me llamo Silvia López. Vengo para apoyar todas las firmas que recolectamos para el paso peatonal, ya que ha habido muchos accidentes, y queremos que nos escuche con mucha atención, porque cada vida es importante para nosotros, no más accidentes. Muchas gracias. Espero que me escuchen. Gracias, muy amables.
Good evening. My name is Silvia López, and I'm here to support all the 125 signatures that were obtained in order for us to obtain this pedestrian walkway. And I really want for you guys to hear us out. This is to make sure that all life is safe and free from facing accidents or death. Thank you so much.
Buenas tardes a todos. Vengo aquí también apoyando a Teresita, y gracias a Manuel Chávez porque nos visitó la vez pasada en la reunión. Y vengo apoyando lo mismo que está haciendo Teresita, todo lo que es la Placencia donde estamos pidiendo que pongan el paso, pasen las personas. Yo manejo ahí como al día cuatro veces, porque trabajo por ahí, regreso y paso. Entonces sí hay que tener mucho cuidado. Yo que voy manejando tengo que tener cuidado cuando pasan las personas, y solamente vengo eso apoyando y pidiéndoles gracias.
Good evening. I am here also to support Teresita, and I want to thank Mrs. Chávez for supporting us during our last meeting. I want to show my support to everyone. I also have to go through Placencia, and I have to drive through that area around three or four times a day, and it can be very dangerous. So we want to be careful. So I want to thank everyone.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Carla Hernández. Soy representante de Costa Mesa Unidas, y vengo a representar a mi compañera para el cruce peatonal. Muchas gracias.
Good evening. I am also here to support all the members from Costa Mesa Unidas, and I want to support the new pedestrian walkway. Thank you so much.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Christian López. I'm part of Costa Mesa Unidos. Costa Mesa Unidos is a community-led group here in Costa Mesa consisting of members across all districts. Today, I'm here to speak in support of the crosswalk at Center and Placentio. Many of the members of Costa Mesa Unidos live in that immediate neighborhood and would directly benefit from this crosswalk. We do recognize that it has been included in the CIP budget, and we thank you for that. However, we want to call on the city to go beyond standard outreach practices and meaningfully engage the Spanish-speaking community. 29% of Costa Mesa residents speak Spanish, and in District Four, that number is 70%. So we just want to ask the city that they ensure that meetings engaged in the immediate neighborhoods are held in Spanish and all outreach material is in Spanish. Holding at least three separate community meetings involving the immediate community as well as a fair notice of at least three weeks to get community members out, and ensuring that there is outreach targeting high school youth and the bus riders who usually use this intersection to access the bus stop on either side. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to more engagement with our community, not just with this project, but future projects moving forward. Thank you.
I had submitted some pictures to the city clerk to be displayed.
Hold on one second. We'll make sure that they're up before you start speaking.
For Resilience, you can let me know when to begin.
They're up now.
Okay.
Hello, city council and mayor. My name is Roberto. I work at Resilience, Orange County. We've been organizing here in the city of Costa Mesa since the beginning of 2022, and our membership base in the community that we've been supporting is Costa Mesa Unidos. And I want to first talk about Plummer Street Alleyway. Last year, when we came to talk about capital improvement projects, this is one of the projects that we advocated with council... Councilmember Chavez to make improvements. We later found out that it was a private alleyway. So this was part of the engagement that our organization helped to do to highlight the conditions on the alleyway, if you can scroll down. This, later this year, earlier last month, there was some improvements, and you can go on to the next picture. And this was on April 12. We hosted several community meetings on Center Street and invited Councilmember Chavez to help us to advocate for these improvements. So I just want to thank code enforcement. I want to thank the council. I want to thank City Manager's Office, SED Heel, for helping us to make these improvements. So that's one comment. If we can go on to the next pictures. This is the petition that folks are referencing. We collected over 125 signatures. That last box there is you live within a 10-minute walking distance to Center Street. The majority of the folks that we collected signatures live within a 10-minute walking distance. You can go on to the next slide. These are the pictures. If you remember, last year, I came in July, August, and September from 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. before every city council meeting. I was counting the number of people that were crossing the alleyway. If you remember, I presented these pictures to you last year. We're back again, and we got the alleyway improved, you know, and this year, we're hoping to increase pedestrians and traffic safety, hoping you're able to support this project. Thank you so much.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Jim. You go.
All right. So through the mayor, we're facing a structural budget deficit. That's important to note here. One-time fixes don't solve for structural budgets. That's when revenues don't match spending, right? So is the city prepared to declare a fiscal emergency necessary to satisfy Section 2-209.2 of the municipal code? That's what staff is referencing, that under the CAN, which is the capital asset needs, which mandates that the city councils spend 5% of the general revenue on the CIP, mandates it by ordinance, requires a supermajority, five of you to vote on this. And what I'm hearing now is words like partial waiver, and now, holy cow, I'm hearing now it's a full-on, full-blown waiver in the next year, okay? Somebody needs to ask the city attorney that says, under this provision, it says emergency exception. There are no words about partial waiver. There are no words about full waiver. And unless you want to willfully intentionally disregard the ordinance here, it says, "In the event of this emergency exception, this provision is applied. The city shall develop a plan to replenish the capital asset funds for the amount exempted." I heard, what is it, 3.5 this year? 9.2, that's $12 million. Have you heard one single plan of how to replenish this? How do you know that it's not bigger? Right now, we're seeing a significant decline in auto taxes. It's true. 25% in the city, 12% at the county, and only 4% at the state. How do you know that it's not continuing and it's going to grow? There is no plan here. You're required to declare a fiscal emergency. No such thing as partial or full waivers, right? You need to vote no here. You need to have staff come back with a broader list of options. What if it's worse? You're facing nothing on that short little timeline here. Staff has left you flat-footed on this. You need to tell every one of your commissions and committees you want to hear from them now, an important thing, because staff is preventing you from hearing that from your committees and commissions.
Hold on one second, Ralph. Go ahead.
Good evening, mayor, council. I wrote a letter to the council raising a number of issues, primarily with the five-year CIP, and hopefully some of those issues resonate with some of the council members, and you'll raise it with staff tonight. In particular, energy and sustainability projects, the Cornerstone Joanne Trail, and Westside Park Development, which I support the allocation of 250K annually for that effort. Also, yeah, the term full waiver was mentioned, and yet staff is proposing 2,150,000 of capital through the general funds. So I'm not quite sure. I'm trying to reconcile full waiver with, in my mind, at least 2,150,000 would move from the general fund to the CIP Fund 401. So a little explanation there. And typically, the bond, library bond, 2.8 million, is paid or counted towards CAN. I guess is that going directly from the general fund to the payment, if you will, not going through 401? So a little further explanation, full waiver versus partial waiver, and what is, I guess, what's the total amount staff is proposing to use for capital purposes in '25, '26? I'm not sure if that was clear so far in the presentation. I think that should be cleared up a little bit. My mind, it would be the 2,150,000 and the 2.8 for the bond fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody on Zoom?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The first speaker is iPhone.
iPhone, you have the floor. iPhone. That narrows it down to a lot of people. iPhone.
We'll go on with the next one. Cynthia McDonald, please.
Cynthia, you have the floor.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing comments post-presentation. I request that number 28 on the list of ongoing CIP projects be removed from the list. This is the 600K traffic signal at Belfast and Fairview Road, along with speed hunts on Belfast. To be clear, I have no problem with the speed hunts. It's just the signal. No outreach was done with the community before this project was put in the budget. The information that was presented to the public at the one outreach meeting on March 19, 2025, was incorrect and was an attempt to steer the public into reacting favorably to the project, which it did not, despite being told this project is a done deal. The numbers for the traffic incidents at McCormick Street were grossly deflated from the numbers I acquired from the police department. At the meeting, the incidents at McCormick were stated as 16, but the numbers from the police department for basically the same time period, 2014 through 2024, are McCormick, 42, Hallerino, 15, Dorset, 15, Belfast, 12, and Augusta, 6. The city needs to fix whatever is wrong with McCormick before planning another signal just one block from the other signals on Fairview. No study was made of the impacts of the intersection of Augusta Way and Fairview Road, which is almost straight across from Belfast, yet the signal will block traffic turning out of Augusta on a Fairview Road. This is a purely car-oriented project. It was not supported by most of the members of the public who completed comment cards at the March meeting. Finally, since a council member directly benefits from this project, he shouldn't have voted on it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Brentwood Park Alliance.
Brentwood Park Alliance, you have the floor.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Stevens and members of the council. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we hear you perfectly. Thank you.
Oh, good. I'm here as an advocate to reimagine the Brentwood Park playground. There's been some express support at the recent parks and community service meetings for Brentwood Park to be a priority and for this project to move forward. This is very timely, as the Brentwood Park advocates have been monitoring park grants and additional funding opportunities that could apply to Brentwood Park. I wanted to share that recently, the California Park and Recreation Society is offering a matching funds assistance program. Timing winds up very nicely, as applications are due by July 7, and winners are announced on July 28. We're hoping that the city can take advantage of this unique opportunity to stretch our budget, especially given the recent inflation, and knowing that equipment for the playground will cost more than it has in previous years. We thank you for your consideration and hope that we can move this project forward.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jake Comer.
Jake, good to hear from you. You have the floor.
Hello. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you great. You have the floor, Jake.
Thank you, council and mayor. It is great to hear about all of the active transportation the city's been implementing over the last decade or so. I know growing up here was not as bike and pedestrian friendly as it is now, so I appreciate all that you guys are doing on that, and I hope you continue with that effort. What I'm commenting on today, though, is I believe in the CIP budget, there is, one of the items there is to do a study to review the OCPA fundings. Basically, this is something that I don't think the city should look at independently, because it would use funds that would otherwise be utilized for other projects. I know the city has not yet heard the results of the OCPA study yet, so it would be worthwhile to at least wait to hear back from that. And if there's any sort of skepticism or uncertainty with that, then maybe potentially look at doing the study at that point. But so far, I believe the feasibility studies have held up, and I know Fountain Valley got one last year, and then they since joined. The city of Stanton's looking at their feasibility study actually tonight as well. And this is something that we're trying to work towards in the city of Orange as well. We're trying to bring their attention to do this feasibility study and to look into membership, and so it's something that I think would kind of not be to the benefit of the city to pay for on top of the one that's being done for free. And also, I, of course, do fully support the city looking to join OCPA, on top of being 3% lower rates than SCE, also providing the city with a board seat, whereas when SCE raises my parents' rates, your guys' rates, you guys have no say in the matter. Whereas when you're on the Board of Directors for OCPA, you have a say, and they implement millions of dollars, or at least a million dollars, sorry, annually into local programs for their constituents. So cities like Buena Park and Floridian have tree planting programs, solar installation.
Cut you off, Jake. Who's next?
Next speaker is Richard Huffman.
Rick, you got the floor.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you sound great.
Okay, thank you. I request that the CIP item for a new signal at Fairview and Belfast be deferred or eliminated. This new signal would be only 200 feet away from the existing one at McCormick Lane and costs $600,000. As a nearly 40-year resident of the Mason North neighborhood, I have observed the traffic patterns on Fairview. Traffic signals give a false sense of safety when you depend on drivers to obey the signal. This project was proposed by Councilman Gamaros, who owns a home on Belfast. I don't remember any presentation of a study to justify a major change to such a major road prior to the council approving this project. The Belfast intersection with no signal has operated more safely than the signalized intersections. For nearly 40 years that I have lived in Mason North, we were informed at a recent outreach meeting that we were getting this signal, like it or not, despite the objections and concerns of many residents. Please delay this project until a more thorough study can be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Next speaker is Philip.
Philip, you have the floor.
Philip, if you could please unmute yourself.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
I can, Philip. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to, a couple things. I just want to say I appreciate the bollards and the bike paths around Costa Mesa. I think it makes the bikers safer, and also it slows the traffic down, I've noticed. And I take, and there's a lot more bikes, especially at 3:00 p.m. when the schools let out electric bikes and kids all over the place. And it, I think we need more of that. Even though it makes the lanes slower, I've read about it, and it even, it make, it tends to make drivers look around more and become more safe. All right, the second thing I want to talk about is the CAP, the C-A-P. I'm looking is, I'm wondering when that's going to come out for review, and I'm wondering if it's going to include anything about the OCPA, Orange County, the power authority, if we're going to get our energy from sustainable methods. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip.
Next again is iPhone.
iPhone, you have the floor.
iPhone, if you could please unmute yourself.
All right, we're done with iPhone. Going once, going twice, sold on iPhone. Anybody else?
No further speakers.
Closed public comment. Okay, now we've had a public comment. Now we can have just the rest of the time for council member questions, comments, however you want to work at. Looks like we have Councilmember Gamaros that wants to go, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we going first names tonight, or?
You can do whatever you want. John, Mr. Mayor, whatever you feel comfortable with.
Mr. John, thank you. So a couple of questions I have. I think the first one I probably want to direct to the city attorney. If we're trying to utilize a full or a partial waiver, do we need to declare an emergency fiscal, do we need to make an emergency fiscal declaration as a council before we can proceed and do such a thing?
No. There are two different options for you under the CAN ordinance. The first is for limited use in 2-209, which provides subsection B. The use or loan of capital asset funds for a purpose other than those referenced in this section shall require approval of a supermajority vote of the entire city council. So if you're considering this a use or a loan, then as it, because it's already, it was already allocated in 20, for this fiscal year, so basically, we're using money that was previously allocated for that purpose. So at least for this year, deferral or a change in use of that funds would fall under that provision. With respect to next year's budget, in the next section of the code, there is a provision for an emergency exception, and it provides that you may, with a supermajority vote, approve a deferral or an entire deferral or a partial deferral if general fund operating reserve falls below the general fund operating reserve in the code, which it hasn't. Or if there's an economic downturn, natural disaster, emergency, or other unforeseen circumstances, you don't have to declare anything. You simply have to decide that that factual scenario is met, and it is a five-vote requirement, supermajority.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. My next question is, I believe it's going to be for Rajah. Please. As far as the fire station goes, what's the timeline for the bonding to be finalized on that?
Councilman Gamaros, I'll have Director Molina talk about the bonding timeline.
Sorry. Thank you.
No, you're welcome. The bond process takes about three to four months. I'm currently in that process right now, so hopefully we'll bring it before council around September, October, and then after that, the funding should be available almost immediately, probably like 30 to 60 days. So we should have the funding this, by the end of this calendar year.
Okay. All right. Thank you. This probably is going to go back to you, Rajah. What's the timeline approximately for groundbreaking to completion of this project? Do you have...
So at this time, we're in the final design process. We hope to get the design and permit process completed by this summer and go for a bid. We hope to come to you for award in fall and then have groundbreaking later this year, right after the bonding, coinciding with the bonding availability. And the construction timeline is estimated to be about two years.
Okay. And then I have a final question regarding the fire station. Are you anticipating the fire station to complete and be finished under the $15 million threshold?
So Councilman Gamaros, at this time, we're still finalizing the design and getting the updated numbers from the consultants, so it's still, it's still very preliminary, but we... but we should have more clear numbers in the next two to three months.
Okay, three months. Okay. Thank you, I appreciate. Thank you, staff, for the presentation, and thank you for answering my questions. That's all I have right now.
Anybody else? All right. Oh. Oh, I thought we were on discussion mode.
I wanted to go, John, but my other.
It's all right. Did you, do you want to go? You can go ahead, Jeff.
Being that, I just wanted to talk about, I don't, I know that we're 24-25, we have two months left, and I'm not gonna, I don't want to sound defeatist, but I'm thinking more into the 26-27 timeframe. I'm hearing a lot about, we're talking about deferred projects of capital improvement, which is disturbing to me because I think it is a main priority for us as a city to get these things done. But I understand economic downturn is, we're hearing a lot about tax revenue, shortfalls, auto and general tax, taxes not coming in where we wanted to. I'm wondering, it's not a question, more of a comment, I'm wondering if our, is there any nexus or correlation between the perceived or actual timeframe it takes to get some of our small businesses permitted, or even some of these bigger projects going, such as Matty's Patty's took a long time, some of these big projects? I'm wondering if that impacts in a negative way. I'm thinking more in the future, our tax base is being, could be influenced negatively by slowdowns in our process. And I'm just wondering if that, it might sound kind of out there, but I have a feeling that, you know, not only these businesses are they going, is it, is it money, direct sales, tax money to the city, but also we have, you know, some of these bigger projects, we have workers involved coming to eat in the city, play in the city, potentially even live in the city. So I'd like to see a renewed in the future emphasis on getting buttoned up in that, in that, in that regard. And some sort of focus, the auto, I know there's, the auto industry in general is, I used to work in the auto industry for many years, I was, so it's kind of, it's familiar to me. I know that we're much higher in our downturn versus the, nationally. Just wondering if we could put together some sort of work group, focus group, task force to look at auto, the auto sales, tax revenue. I know this isn't CIP comments directly, but it's related to avoiding having to defer any projects in the future. I do see this as an emergency, whether or not we have to declare it or not, we have to get focused and buttoned up and fiscally nailed down. And as far as selfishness for me, Loriann, did we have, did Brenda have that PowerPoint for me? I'm going to go ahead and do some shameless ask in the future. First of all, the Brentwood Park Alliance, young lady that spoke, I want you to know, if you're still listening, that we're all over it. Raja has promised me we're going to be getting that going, and I know he is, and I know that's a big deal to the, to the folks over on that part of the east side. I always spoke to them actually during the campaign season and got a lot of questions asked. I had no idea what I was doing at the time, but now I do, and I want you to know that we're focusing on it. And in the future, what I've decided, what I've done with my little daughter is try to activate her, and my wife is certainly my, my right hand in this stuff. We did a park tour of the east side, and one thing that we've noticed is that all the parks have, are very, they're not in terrible shape, but there seems to be, as most parks are focused on the kiddos, which is great, I have three of them, two of them are so much kiddos anymore. But one thing we did notice is that there is not much attention paid to adult use of the park. And what do I mean by that? We have come up with the East Side Park Challenge, and this is designed to bring together east side Costa Mesa residents through fitness, community, and engagement. Next slide, please. So these are the, all the parks on the east side, we visited each and every one of them. And you can go to the next slide, please. What is the East Side Park Challenge? So we want to install four to five pieces of adult exercise park equipment in all six parks. And the idea, and I know this might need to be done in phases, is to visit each park, and residents will be able to see an information board at each park, there's a QR code, and it'll show the bike route, that's for our list, it'll show the walking route, and it'll show the driving route of how to get to each park. So it's more of a, we can't verify that you're actually going to complete the exercise at each set, but you, the challenge is for residents to visit each park, whether they walk, ride, or drive, and they can participate in getting active and fit. And next slide, please. So you can see, these are some examples of what we'll be talking about, and the expenditure, Raja tells me, it's not astronomical in the big scope of city expenditures. We think we can get this done, I don't want to say cheap, but these are some examples here. You've seen them in other parks. I've actually utilized them at the VA, have some of these in some of their parks and their property. Next slide, please. Examples more, circuit. Next slide, please. So this would be an example of, just, there's, there are pictures showing the exercises that would be conducted at that particular park, and on one of the signs, there's a QR code, you can make the decision on how you're going to get to the next stop. Next slide, please. Is that it? No? So QR codes, you can see that's an example of it'll just basically be pulling up Google or Apple Maps, and it will show you how to get there based on the route or the mode of transport you choose. Next slide, please. Information board, equipment, the IT component, and if there's some language on there, my wife works in IT, so I'm like, honey, I don't think they know what UX integration is, but she wanted that on there anyway. And so the incentives are, we want an active community, and we want people to be engaged, and an engaged community is a happy community. And I think that might be it. Next slide. So thank you, guys, and that is my kind of idea and dream for the 20, it's more of a, I don't know, Loriann tells me that's probably more likely the three-ish year kind of plan, get it in there, get it going, or, she's waving me, no, we'll leave it there, there's some negotiating that'll take place in the future. This is for you on the east side, and doesn't mean I don't love the city in general, but I'm paying attention, and Brentwood's going to get done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, Mike?
I'll jump in, I think I'll probably be relatively brief. So thanks, I'll just jump in. First, I just want to thank staff. I know last couple study sessions and/or public sessions, we had, I know myself, I had requested that you use the resource of our committees, and I like the fact that in the slides, 25-26, you incorporated Five Packs input, and I appreciate Five Pack that you submitted your recommendations, and as a committee, you took the time to kind of comb through the CIP. Now whether or not we adopt them or not, or we agree with their recommendations, I just, again, wanted to reiterate, from the DA's, I appreciate all that information, so that when we make a decision, we know that we've listened to and we've heard from members of the community and the committee. And I do see that in the presentation tonight, you guys have appeared to have adopted two of Five Packs recommendations, and just because there was a lot coming at it, a lot of information in your presentation, can you just, I guess, repeat for me what was the justification for keeping the cast iron drain pipe project on the deferred list?
So Councilmember Beulah, at this time, that pipe is functioning without any issues, and we think we can last a year or two with that. Let's see some why we kept it.
Okay. Wasn't it an emergency as much as some of the other identified items? Okay. And then also, wasn't lost on me that, page 45 of the slide, you guys went to the Parks Commission, asked for their input, and their big ask was an additional 250, which I believe you've identified, that's, there's a portion that already allocated from previous budgets, did I read that properly?
That's correct.
Okay. Couple of questions. We talk about a partial deferral of CAN for this fiscal year, 24-25, or the one that we're about to wrap up. I still haven't heard anybody put a number to that. CAN's 5%, and I keep hearing partial, partial, and I've seen the 3.6 or the 2.9. What's the actual percentage that this partial is we're talking about?
So just to kind of break it down for you, it's the 5% of the CAN, but we also utilize the debt payment that goes to Alliance Park, about 2.8. So in the current fiscal year, we allocate about a little bit more than $6.8 million to go towards the CAN. This would reduce it by, you know, 2.9, so you still would have approximately about $3.9 million still in the current year towards the projects.
Okay, so 3.9 of the previously allocated would still be being properly or applied to what it was originally allocated for?
That is correct.
And I'm curious, and this is more of a general question, I don't expect a precise, if you can give me a precise answer, I'll be impressed. Typically, in any budget year, so let's say 24-25, we identify and fund various CIP projects. And then I learned this evening that even going into 25-26, we have 102 projects still in process, $93 million that has previously been allocated, they're funded, those things are still going to be being worked upon. So let me just start there. Is that correct?
That's correct, except that of the 103, I just want to point out, there are a few which we are asking for it to be deferred, so it'll be more in the range of 90, 94 or so.
There you go, being an engineer and being very precise, but close to 100. So there's about 100 projects, so you guys will stay very busy.
Yes.
But my question is, in any given year, when we go through this budget process, and we identified, okay, here's the four, five, eight, 10 projects that are making it on this year's budget, and I don't mean this to be sarcastic or whatnot, but do any of those get done in the budgeted year? Is it, or what percent typically actually get done in the year that they're budgeted?
So to give a good number, I mean, this is hard for me, but it's, I would say 30-35% get done.
Hmm. And how many get actually underway as far as breaking ground? What percentage rather than a number?
That's a bigger number. I think, I think almost two-thirds of them do get underway. Like, as you can see in the list, we have, of the 103 that we listed, 72 are actually underway right now, 30 are yet to start column.
Okay. Oh, I would request as staff, and I appreciate Kimberly's commentary, interpretation of the law, believe it or not, I had kind of looked through that statute prior to tonight, and I came to that same conclusion. Economic downturn qualifies, other things, but I did a comment from Public Gym and whatnot. When we come back in May and we're actually asked to vote on this CAN waiver, I would like a recommendation or some information as to how we would intend to pay back the loan, if we characterize it as a loan or whatnot. What's the game plan for replenishing the CAN deferral?
Just to clarify, in May, will be a study session, so we will not be taking a vote, we'll be coming for a vote in June.
Yeah, well, when we get to that vote, and maybe at the next study session, you can start hinting at what that recommendation might be. So I got a sense as to if we borrow from CAN today, how we're going to comply with the ordinance and figure out how we're going to replenish it down the road. And I think we're going through this process, and this is more of a comment, I appreciate that you're projecting your CIP deferral ask for the 25-26, but I still think it's premature, we're not being asked to vote tonight. I think before myself, I can't speak for the rest of council, are asked to defer projects in 25-26, I'll feel much better about it when I've had the opportunity to look at our entire projected overall budget and to what other things are potentially up for non-allocations of general fund dollars as opposed to things that we need to keep our infrastructure. And I know you guys are prioritizing infrastructure, but other things that our public would like to see done, primarily parks and things like that, but that's just a thought that I've got. When we're asked to defer 25-26 CIP, I'm going to want to have a global review of the budget to see where those slot in. And I think that's what I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. Andrea, you want to go?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I just want to say, this is beautiful, Raja. This is, I feel like we've done the Go Find a Rock exercise with you every year, where we're like, no, 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 but we want like a little more detail, and we want this on it, and we want last year, and we want high priority, and so, oh, thank you. It's beautiful. I wrote deferred maintenance. I'll have to figure out what I meant by that in a second here. Why only .7 million of gas tax money? Where does that number come from? I think that's a Carol question, but maybe it's a Raja question.
So the total funding that we use for street sweeping is $1.4 million. At this time, as part of the current budget, $700,000 is being funded approximately, I'm giving maybe 720, is funded by general fund, the remaining 720 is funded by gas tax in the current budget. We're proposing that the existing 720 that's in the gas tax also be funded by gas tax.
Got it.
So that's why it's 700.
Are there, is there anything else we could be funding with gas tax money that we're not funding right now?
I think...
That suggests that we had a surplus of gas tax money sitting around that we could use to apply.
Based on our numbers, fund balances, I think we are pretty close to using up all the funds for different purposes, including street maintenance and some of our employee salaries and street sweeping and other uses.
Okay. So none of the Parkway Maintenance, for example, could be offset by?
We are also using some of the gas tax monies for street maintenance type of activities too, like signs and repair of streets, so to buy equipment and to actually perform the work.
Okay. And then, city manager, I know we talked about the street sweeping a little bit the last time around, I do think by the time we get to the next round of budget, we'll want to maybe take a deeper look if there's anything else we can do in terms of our street sweeping contract. I could talk about it with you separately. Can we, yes. So Fire Station Two. So we've got a remaining fund balance of $2.9 million from capital improvement funds, and I know we're pairing that with bond money. Why the, why the 2.9 out of pocket? Why not be able to, if we've only spent 177K and we're not ready to break ground, can we shift more of the capital improvement money, or is that a requirement of the bond?
Basically, it's kind of like a mortgage where you want to have some dollars down. It also provides financial security for, as you go out for the bond, because when you're going out for a mortgage, you want to have some money set aside so you can put down. It's the same type of concept for a bond.
Okay. And we've decided that's the right, that's the right split?
Correct.
My understanding is that the ambulance program is currently throwing off a good deal of surplus revenue. Is there a scenario, first of all, I'd like to make sure we talk about that in the budget discussion, because it's been a little while since we revisited what the current kind of breakout of those funds are. But I'm also wondering if it makes sense to dedicate any of that future revenue to fire station upgrades. We've got the $5 million in 24-25, and then the $15 million in bonds. There's a lot of, there's a lot of fire station upgrades and maintenance that needs to happen. Can any of, can we consider future years dedicating some of that?
The current ambulance revenues are deposited into the general fund, and currently, they have essentially flattened out, so I'm not too sure if we're going to have any more adjuvant. additional increases in the ambulance revenues, to be honest. And at this point, if we were to rededicate any of those ambulance revenues, it would be a reduction to the general fund.
Do we know what the current revenues were from the ambulance program this year?
I can get that to you in a few minutes.
Thank you. The Chiefs back there, I think I would, I don't know if any council members want to join me, but I would like to do maybe a fire station tour with the goal of looking at maintenance and other repairs that are necessary. It just strikes me, every time I've looked, six years in, every time I look at the CIP, we've got quite a bit of maintenance and upkeep, so, and I'll be honest, I've been to most of the stations, but not all of them, so I think it would be a good thing if any council members would like to join me in that. Rajah, how are we feeling about pausing progress on construction projects in progress? I'm thinking specifically about 700154, which is the golf course and tennis center improvements.
At this time, we have a project, I mean, at the tennis center, we are working on the, on the lights for the parking lot. That's our last project that, that's already designed and underway, so that's, that's happening. But other than that, we didn't design any other improvements, but, but we are, that's, that's a project that we'll be working on as soon as some of the other projects are completed, then we can jump into this one.
Would you consider adding, I don't know, $500,000 of that remaining balance to the deferral list?
I think we already proposed some of those funds-
Of the 990?
As part of the deferral. I need to... Oh, no, so this is, yeah, we deferred already golf, $400,000 of-
That's the Costa Mica Country Club modernization, that is a different project number?
Yes. Yeah, and, and, I mean, these are related projects, this was, this is supposed to be improvements to the golf course, which includes the country club as well as, as well as actual golf course itself. And, and there are some needs for cart paths and other, other improvements that are being planned, but not designed yet.
Understood, but we have $990,000 that we have not spent yet of this year, and even subtracting out the lighting for the tennis center parking lot, it would seem that that would be a place where I frankly prefer to defer than the senior center. I don't know if other council members have thoughts on that. I would like to add the Center Street and Placentia crosswalk to the 2025, 2026 budget. Thank you for everyone who came out tonight to speak on that, I think that's, I think it's important and very much in keeping with the priorities and values of this council. On the senior center improvements, can you talk a little bit more about what the scope of that work is?
So the $250,000 that we are proposing to defer are future improvements to mainly paint and carpet the senior center, redo that. And we felt it's better to wait on that project until the Jamboree Housing Project is done, because there will be some impacts with constructions, we don't know what's going to happen when that hap, when that project happens, so it's probably better to wait till that's done or close to being completed, then we can implement the carpeting and painting of the senior center.
Is it painting the exterior or the interior?
Interior, as well as, if there are funds, we can do the exterior, but mainly the interior, as well as the carpeting, refresh, refresh the existing.
Okay. It doesn't, doesn't seem like there's a nexus with construction next door and doing carpeting inside, I think, I'm not, I'm not quite sure that that's worth waiting on. It's a heavily used senior center, and I think I'd prefer to see that done this year and defer other things. Okay, 210015, Police Department Emergency Communications Facilities remodel. This is one where the design is underway, but if I have any sense of how long things take, we again probably wouldn't break ground until the end of this year, is that right?
That's correct. Patrick Bauer, he's the project manager on this one. I think we anticipate the design to be completed by early next year, and construction could be about a year or so from now, or a year and a half from now.
Okay. Is, you know, Ms. Malina, I've been, I think we've had this conversation before, and I want to like pile on to that bond, but it seems like there's potentially some synergy in both timeline and type of work if we were to try to incorporate the emergency communication center in with the Station 2 bond. I don't know how you feel about that, but-
I'll need to get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you, that's the best I could ask for. And then, I am curious about the West Side Restoration Project, I feel like we've deferred that a few times, I'll let one of the West Side Council members ask more questions about that, but it doesn't seem we've got anything immediately planned, but if, yeah, I think Councilmember Reynolds is probably planning to follow up on that. Yeah, so that's my, I mean, that's my top line recommendation, is I prefer to see the golf course and tennis center improvements pushed out, and the senior center improvements, and frankly, probably the sewer line improvement kept in the budget if we could defer 500K out from the other project. And then I remembered what my deferred maintenance note meant. I think that's the, you know, big picture wise, for the new council members, for those listening in, like, that is the takeaway, is that so much of the thing, the, the work on here is about facilities and about maintenance and about upkeep. I think a couple of years ago, I talked about, like, I want to have the most boring budget we've ever seen, because it's cool to add playgrounds and amenities and parks, and we all want that stuff, trust me, I'm not happy the butterfly garden keeps getting deferred. But this is how the cookie crumbles, right? Like, this is, we need to take care of our buildings, our facilities, our conditions for our police officers, for our firefighters, I mean, this is the bare minimum of what a city needs to do. And then, and then there's all the fun stuff and the amenities and the services that we provide, and finding the balance between those two is incredibly challenging, because we all have obligations to our constituents, we all have people who want shiny objects in our districts, and I think, you know, that's, if, if there's kind of one takeaway from here, no, I don't want to spend $250,000 on a fuel tank replacement, that's not high on my constituents list, but this is what we have to do to have a working city. So, again, thank you for this, and, yeah, I appreciate all the work that's gone into it.
Councilmember Moore? Just to answer your question, the ambulance program is currently bringing in about $7.2 million a year.
Okay. Thanks.
Also, Councilmember Moore, just want to point out, the Center Street project is in the budget, 25, 26. It's, it's for design and outreach for the 25, 26 fiscal year and construction in the following fiscal year. So it's a project number, it's the fourth project under transportation-
Got it, okay.
-for 25, 26.
Well, thank you, that's good news.
Okay. Arliss, did you want to ask some questions?
Sure.
Or make some statements?
Yeah, I do, believe it or not, I have a few more questions from the long list that I sent earlier. Maybe just some clarifying ones, actually, could you, so you mentioned in the presentation earlier, the Parks Needs Assessment. So my understanding from your earlier response is that's really just looking at existing facilities in parks, so that'll be folded in, or we'll use the results in, sort of in tandem with our facilities needs assessments to help program more strategically and thoughtfully going forward?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and we're expecting to have the results of that by the end of 2025?
Early, by early, yeah.
Or early next year, okay, so the timing will work for the same discussion-
Yes.
-for next year's budget, okay, that's good to hear. And then with respect to potential additions to parks, my understanding, and I mentioned this, I think at the last council meeting, is that our Parks and Community Services Commission has embarked on a process to try to give recommendations for how we prioritize. I'm going to ask Director Gruner to come up and just describe that for myself, but all of council as well, because I think that'll be a really useful tool for us going forward in terms of how we think about parks, investments going forward.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the community. So the PAX Commission is embarking on a philosophical framework that is going to allow them to identify certain CIP projects and kind of prioritize based on certain principles and values that the commission is going to be adopting. And that is going to be coinciding along with the objection, the objectives and the goals of the council as well. So they will be in, in an alignment, so that the PAX can provide some, you know, some, some good recommendations to the council and allow them to make a, a good decision, you know, allow you guys to make a good decision regarding what CIP projects the PAX Commission is recommending. And that will coincide along with, you know, Public Works. So it's just a philosophical framework that will be, yeah, just better to evaluate certain CIP projects and prioritize them based on the parks assessment and the needs of the community.
Great, and I know you're, or the commission is just embarking on this concept, which I love.
Yes.
Is there any information you have or estimates you have on the timing of when, you know, you would, you or one of them would share that proposed framework with us?
Yeah, so we just started at the last PAX meeting, and it was really a very good brainstorming session on concepts and ideas, so we're formulating those concepts and bringing that back to the next PAX meeting for further discussion and kind of fine tuning those priorities or those principles and values. And then that will be followed up by developing some key criterias of what those principles and values will follow. And then that will be in line with the CIP projects evaluation process that we're looking to bring to the PAX in probably November, December, so they can kind of formulate a strategy going into next year's budget cycle.
Great, thank you, you anticipated my, my next question, folding that into the cycle. And from the discussions today, again, I know early, based on what you described, I'm assuming that would also include consideration of where we don't have parks, so looking at neighborhoods where maybe there are no parks amenities because there are no parks serving that neighborhood.
Right.
Would that come into play there?
Yeah, it will, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, my only other, well, we'll see, one other additional question is a follow-up. I was, I had asked what success we had with sort of sponsor, donor type programs for small amenities. I recall that we set up some kind of foundation when we opened the Donald Dungen Library, I'm looking for Alma, maybe she knows that best. Was that fruitful? Is that something that we could potentially use for, I remember seeing like a 50K item for audio visual, visual equipment at Norma Herzog. But, how fruitful was that? Is that something that you would want to consider? Is it more of a pain than, than it is beneficial?
Yeah, it requires a lot of administration. They are generally used for large projects like that, like Donald Dungen Library or Norma Herzog. For smaller projects, I'm not sure, unless a donor comes of their own interest of having, you know, you know, funding for a specific type of an item, then it works out. For example, the Friends of Library did the musical instruments that, that we installed in different places, so.
Yeah, okay.
So it, it, it works in different ways, but it's up to the donors, if they have any interest on funding anything specific.
Okay. And I'm, yeah, I'm, I mean, hey, if we can get a donor to build a building, that'd be fantastic, but I'm thinking more of the, the smaller amenities types of projects. So it's something I, I just want to consider or continue to, to think about, but certainly we'll listen if, if the team says that's, that's a real pain to administer. So I'll just share, based on some questions I, I shared earlier and answers I got, I'll share a few thoughts on what I like, what I, you know, wish was there and would like to try to, to see make work. I did want to actually just share a couple notes just from today, so, too, I'm guessing this is under Rob Ryan, the Small Tree Replacement Program. I think I sent a note to Rajah about a couple of dead trees I saw in my neighborhood. I noticed today on my way home from work that the dead trees had already been pulled out and new trees in with water bags, so thank you. I knew you would respond quickly, I did not expect that quickly. So happy to see that, and I was happy to see additional funding allocation in our tree maintenance program. I know that's been something that we've been talking about for a long time. I did see a note that the thought there was more maintenance on our, like, trees and medians, prioritizing, you know, just looking for nexuses with our other priorities like pedestrian environment, so like really focused on tree care and maintenance for trees that provide shade, where people are walking is, is where I hope some of that money would go, but the support, the need for, for additional tree maintenance. Similarly, I got an email this afternoon from a resident that I met with, with some staff last week. That resident mentioned someone who moves around the city in a wheelchair and almost on a daily basis is traveling from the Deep West Side to Triangle Square. We told him about our Clean Mobility Program Shuttle, we got a note today saying that that resident was like thrilled to find out about that program, which just like warms my heart so much, these are exactly why we're building these programs, and so, you know, more props to that Clean Mobility Program. And that is one of the notes I have, I was concerned to see that not have a funding line item in the five-year when the grant funding comes out. I know we want to find grant money, but I think that that's going to be a service that people really come to rely on, and I'd like to figure out a way to just plan for funding for that, you know, and then, and then find funding for that beyond the, the grant period. Okay, so thanks, just two really happy notes today on, on things that I'm seeing in terms of our, our city services. And that really, you know, is, as, I think Councilmember Moore really eloquently put, like, the, the challenging part, like, it's wonderful in budget season when we have tons of surplus and $15 million in, you know, grants from the state and surplus at the end of the year, and we get to reprogram that, that's the fun part of this, of this role. With the, the challenges that we're facing now with a decline in revenue and some uncertainty ahead, quite a bit of uncertainty ahead, my focus is really on what are the services and needs supporting our most vulnerable populations? So of course, I'm thinking about people who live in the city without a car, who have no choice but to walk, bike, or bus around the city. I'm thinking of our seniors who, you know, we know there's already food insecurity, we know that our Meals to Wheels, or, yeah, Meals on Wheels program is oversubscribed, we know there's probably a lot of, there is a lot of uncertainty for that population going forward. We know, as I mentioned earlier, we've got neighborhoods that do not have parks, and so those are residents of the city who have no access to parks, and those residents who don't have vehicles are really limited in their access to parks. So with that, the, the wishes I have include continuing our walk, bike, safety education program. I noticed we don't have funding listed in that for beyond this year, that's something that we've built a ton of momentum on. We hear about bike safety, especially e-bike issues, all of the time. I, I hate to think that we might lose momentum on that, and knowing that it's only about $5,000 per event, I really like to find some funds to be able to continue some momentum. Doesn't have to be every school, every year, I know that can be challenging for the principals, but, but finding a way to continue the momentum there, continuing to train people who may be able to do those, help us with those events going forward, I think is really important. This is an item that was not on the list, but we've been talking about, and that's a, a striping project in the College Park Avocado neighborhood. If I'm recalling correctly, this is a, just a striping plan that could net like 50-plus parking spots in a neighborhood that's very, very, very much impacted with parking. I'd love to find a way to get that in there, maybe there's a sort of a short-term, quick-build type project that we can figure out that's a little bit lower cost than the original estimate. And then on the list was the senior center, so I had a question about this. So the senior center, as, as proposed, that 250K is proposed to stay in the budget, right? It was just an alternative option to defer that, so I just wanted to make sure I have that. that clear.
That's correct, it's an alternative.
Okay. Yeah, I, I agree. I had a similar reaction to Councilmember Mar. I didn't see how building, you know, waiting for the, the Affordable Housing Project really affects what, what's in the Senior Center. And again, we have a large percentage of our seniors who already depend on the Senior Center for food, for community, for affordable programs. I'm, you know, painfully expecting that percentage to grow with the uncertainty ahead of many of our seniors, so I would really like to see that stay in the budget, and then really prioritizing some of the senior-serving, public-serving amenities. One of the things that I think we had talked about was just the sort of kitchen, coffee-bar area, things that, that make people feel welcome and, and provide them with some, some And then lastly is, is the bus stops. We've talked a lot about transit as we've built, built up momentum for people walking and for people biking. We've finally started to really think about people who are taking the buses. It's painful to drive or, or bike around the city as a council member and see so many people waiting at bus stops in like blazing sun or in the rain where they have no place to sit or no shelter. And so I'd really, really, really like to see, I know we use some surplus funds to, to build a little bit of a bucket to provide some amenities, but that's going to fall far short of providing amenities that give our transit riders dignity. And we have a whole rezoning program that's built around like high-quality transit corridors, and I just, I just, I feel like we cannot call it high-quality transit when we don't even have benches at many of our bus stops. So I'd really like to see, to figure out a way to continue building the program for bus stop amenities. I think I mentioned all of those things. So those are, those are my, those would be my priorities. Trying to be responsible and not just ask you to add things without offering what I would be okay taking away. The, we have a two-and-a-half-million-dollar project on sunflower rehab. We can talk about whether or not this is reasonable, but I, you know, I recall that we have, you know, One Metro West approved, which has, I think is part of their development agreement, some sunflower rehabilitation. We have a new project in the same area, also along sunflowers. Like, maybe there's some opportunity to either wait for them to do their work on the street or defer some of that work until they've done a bunch of construction. I don't know, look into it.
Just want to point out, that project is RMR funded. It's a general funded, it's, it's a, it's a state-funded project.
Oh, it is, okay, well, okay. Just trying to share ideas, okay. Given, you know, what I shared about my priorities and where, you know, I, I hope that our council's head at, given, head is at, given the vulnerable communities in Costa Mesa and the uncertainty ahead that will affect people's daily lives, my preference would be to, you know, put in, to prioritize projects serving those communities and defer modernization of our country club, for example. So I support that recommendation that we heard earlier. Those are the ideas that I came up with. Thank you.
Mayor Protem. Yeah, Matt, Matt, well.
Thank you, John. Yeah, no, it's, it's hard with us being formal sometimes, not formal study sessions, but let me begin by saying just thank you to the residents that came today and spoke. Thank you to Five Pack for your recommendations. I know they're very thoughtful, and I appreciate reading that today. Thank you to staff for, again, bringing us something that we can work with, and I want to say also thank you to my councilmember Pierce, because we are looking at, you know, making some tough choices, and it's really important for me, and I think for the, for the audience and for our city, to hear everyone's perspectives and their angles and what they care about, right? It, it makes it more human as we discuss what our budget's going to look like, because our budget is our city's values. And those that know me pretty well know that there will be three things I believe my duty as councilmember is to do. The first and most important is private public safety. The second is make sure we're thriving economically in our city of Costa Mesa. And the third is making sure we're improving in quality of life, quality of life of our residents. So I have a quick, a couple of quick hits, not in no particular order, but I will make some comments on each of those three values for me. And I'll begin first with public safety. First of all, I'm happy to take up Andrea's offer and challenge to tour all the fire stations. I think it's vitally important for us to understand how those facilities are currently operating and where there's need for improvement. These are our city employees, our firefighters, who are the first to respond for any medical emergency or any fire emergency, the first people to come out when our residents are in the worst part of their lives. And it's very important to me that we have the adequate equipment for them. Alongside that, for me, it's very important to not repeat prior mistakes of years prior and not lose staffing as we look at, you know, this, this challenge ahead. I don't want to see a repeat of years prior where we lose officers, we lose employees, we lose firefighters. It's important to me that every employee understands their value, because ultimately they're the ones serving our community and our residents. And that, and they're first and foremost important for us to serve our residents in the times, times of need. And I also don't want to see us really rolling back any of the bike infrastructure that we've, we start building out. I, I began honestly a little tepid, I didn't really believe in the idea that, that we can create a more safe, viable community. When I was up in Costa Mesa, the joke I always told everyone is like you only bike until you had a car. But with more and more proliferation of e-bikes and more and more young people having e-bikes, it's crucially important for the community that we're protecting our youth by giving them a place to be safe and not be on the, on the road with cars. I have a lot of faith in our youth, but I will acknowledge that youth sometimes makes youthful mistakes, and I've seen a couple of kids leave Soy on wheelies and driving down Meyer Street and where, where cars drive, and anything we can do to keep our kids safe as they bike home through school, bike home to work, because all of our kids work, help their parents pay rent, that is, to me, is valuable for, for public safety. Now I'll go over a little bit to economic, economic thriving. I agree with, with Jeff, you know, it's, any, any opportunity to reflect on our processes and reflecting what we're doing well or not well, or can improve on, is vital. And I want us to be really looking at how long it takes for us to get permits up for businesses and permits for housing. And it's very, and for me, it's very, very simple. The faster we get a new business open, the faster we get more sales tax revenue, the faster our residents have a new location to experience. And same with housing, the faster we build housing, the faster we have that land value increase, giving us more property tax. We have to look at everything as we look at this situation, and I want us to be honest and look at how we can be more effective when it comes to permits for businesses and housing. I also want us to look at the tennis center, particularly with the pickleball. I have good ties with, with the operators, and they're telling me, just colloquially, from their experience operating the tennis center, that it's very common for someone to revert the pickleball court and then bring some of their friends, and all of a sudden you have eight people using one court. I think it's time for us to look at the fees for the tennis center and see maybe it's worth our while to shift from paying per hour to paying per person. We charge pretty low rates. I think we're charging about 12 bucks an hour for a court. I'm sure folks wouldn't mind paying 12 bucks to play pickleball with their friends. So just a thought for us to look at revenue across the board, but again, this should be something we look at everywhere, not just pickleball, but, you know, are the golf course rates still at market? If we're a little bit below, it's fine, but I don't, I don't want to be too below, right? We've got to make sure that these public entities that we own are ultimately serving the community by having, yes, an affordable price point, but also a price point that brings us revenue. And then just quickly on the community choice energy conversation, I also agree with the, with the prior commenter. OCPA does those studies for the cities that they want to join the organization, and I'm pretty sure they're done with their, with their study of Costa Mesa. So city manager, if we can perhaps reach out to OCPA and see if they can present that, that study for us, that'd be really helpful, because I'm looking at ways to save money for residents as well. And if we can save 3% for our residents going to OCPA, that's money we're leaving on the table for our residents. And in these tough times, I'm looking out for their dollar as well as the city's dollar. So I want to see that agendized as quickly as possible. And not for quick quality of life, and these are more of the extras. Obviously, I want to make sure we're fiscally responsible, but if we have the means, let's look how we can invest in the community. First of all, thank you for everyone coming from Costa Mesa, Nidos, for speaking today about the crosswalk. It is on our CIP budget, and I'm happy we're going to be prioritizing it. I look forward to having good, robust conversations with city staff and the community about how the design looks, but it's an important opportunity for all of us to remember that your voice has power, because you came here last year asking for a new alleyway, and we got a new callejón, and now we're going to get a new crosswalk. And it's important to use our voice to highlight what you think we should be focusing on. And more importantly, again, it keeps our community safe. We saw the pictures, people are jaywalking across Placencia, a really wide street to cross, to cross, to get to a bus stop. Let's help them be safe as we're getting to work. I also want to, first of all, I want to thank Jeff for his amazing presentation, it's an awesome idea to have a challenge in your district. I need a copy of that. But yes, I think it's vitally important that we're investing in parks that need to be invested in. Jeff is doing what I do in my, in my district, you know? I got here, I championed Shawarma Park because that park needed a lot of love, love and care. I championed Ketchum Leable Park because we're in a, we're in a parkport near, area in Costa Mesa and West Side. And also acknowledging the truth that Eastside Costa Mesa also has a shortage of parks. There's only like four, five, or six parks in the whole Eastside Costa Mesa. And it's important for us to make sure we're improving all parks in all Costa Mesa, not just West Side, but also Eastside. And I'm really happy to see us moving forward with Shawarma and Leable this year. But I also want to see us make sure we actually prioritize Brentwood Park, because I did ask for that, that vote a few years back, and I didn't mean when I say it, that park should also be prioritized. And finally, sorry, second to last, also agree with our list about Avocado and College Park. My dad lived in that, in that neighborhood, and I remember living with him when I was going to UC Irvine, and parking does get really bad in those neighborhoods. So any opportunity we have to create more parking by using minor restriping, I think we should consider. And hopefully it doesn't have to be something really extensive or really expensive, we can maybe just get a paint can and, you know, change how things work, but that's vital for that community, because I know parking is a really big issue for that portion east of Harbor and west of, west of the, the fire freeway. And finally, my last point, and this really is an opening to comment, I appreciate that we've been funding West Side restoration and, and we're finding, we're trying to find ways to improve Westside Costa Mesa, and I think we've done a really good job these past six years. It's really beautiful to see how much we've improved Westside Costa Mesa. But in times of, in times, when times get tough and we're in tough times, I always find it beholding to look at my own self and my own community. And if that's an area where we can save a few bucks for, you know, for one year not improving a few streets, I think my community, Westside Costa Mesa, is, is willing to pay their part as look at this bigger budget, budget coming up. But again, I want to appreciate the work we've done as a community for Westside Costa Mesa, but I also acknowledge that when the buck hits the road, I'm always going to be someone that offers up things that are important to me to look out scaling back. And with that, again, I just want to thank everyone, I want to thank my councilpeers for their insights and their comments. I want to thank the staff for your, your good work and trying to make sure we're in a good position. I want to thank Five Pack for, again, offering us their perspective and their points of view. And again, more importantly, I want to thank the residents for coming today and making your voices heard, and I hope you guys make a habit out of this, because as you know, la voz es poder, your voice is your power. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, after you go, I'd like one more bite at the apple.
Go ahead and take a bite at the apple. So does Lauren wants another bite at the apple. Take another bite at the apple.
Oh, just, you know, at the risk of seeming partial to, to fire, I wanted to add the West Side substation and the police station to my tour request. Thank you.
Lauren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just briefly want to refer to, I guess it's going to be slide 29. Who's controlling the slides? Thank you. And then Ms. Green, can you put the video up that I spoke about earlier? I'd like to show a video briefly that I'd like to ask about. Thank you. For those of you looking, what we're seeing here is a street sweeper not really sweeping the area that they're supposed to be sweeping, because there's cars everywhere. And I noticed that we're going to allocate $700,000 in gas tax funds for the street, street sweeping, and I'd like us to take another look at how we're allocating funds, because this does not seem like a very good use of our city dollars when can't even sweep the streets. And then another, another thing I want to, another point I want to make is we're hearing about the golf course, so I'm not sure who this question goes to, but does the golf course generate money, a profit? Is it profitable for the city?
The city currently receives about $3.5 million a year.
$3.5 million, would it, would it be possible, since it's, what, we're looking at a $400,000, is that right, $400,000 in tenant improvement for the golf course? Is that what we were talking about? Could we get a loan for that, and that way it wouldn't impact us so greatly, since it seems like a profitable endeavor and probably could pay for itself very easily? Is that something that we could look into?
The $3.5 million is currently deposited into the general fund, so if we were to take out a loan, it would additionally be an additional general fund hit.
So how can we look at funding this endeavor for something that's profitable to the city? That's, I guess, what my question would be. Something I'd like to look at, I don't expect there to be an answer, but of all the things to cut, we make money off that thing, so that's, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. So I'll start there, just really briefly. Yeah, if the golf, so the golf course, country club modernization for 2520, 2425, yeah, that's the 400,000, and that's on our list of ones to defer, and that made it through Five Pack, and I think everybody's prepared to vote for that, so that's not a problem. The other 1.2 million, as I understand it, there's about 900 and some odd thousand left in that. So if that's in play, if that 900,000's in play, and it sounds like it is, what I'd like to see, not tonight, right, but sometime before we vote, is some data. I'd like to see over the next, for the, over the last six years, how much has the golf course generated? And this is before, the reason I picked six years is I want to know the rates of the golf course and how they've gone up in the last six years, that's pre-pandemic, because when we opened the golf course after the pandemic, we jacked up the rates. I'd like to know how much, over the last 10 years, we've spent out of city general funds, if anything, on these improvements, not the modernization. You understand the category I'm talking about, Raja? How many have we spent? How much have we spent, if anything? And, and also, if you could, and this is a little bit of a historical project, go back all the way to the last big recession in 2008, 2009, because I've been told by people who, who know, because they were there, that at that time, there was a, there's a golf course fund, a certain amount of the fees go to that fund, and ever since that time, the city's general fund has been scraping half of what was previously allocated to improving the golf course. So I'd like us to go back to that budget and, and see when that decision has been made. I did the calculations one time, and I figured that the, and it's higher now, that the general fund has taken about $3 to $4 million from the golf course over that period of time. Just so we understand what we're voting on. I loved the presentation of all the things we've done. I, I think it's very important for us and the public to reflect on all the projects that we've done historically, particularly in the last year. You just focused on that, but we see it all around the city, and it's very, very impressive. I was just driving from Soy yesterday back home, and I was on Hamilton, and on Hamilton there are these little speed bumps, and they've got lines going up to the speed bumps, and right next to the speed bumps, there are these three little bollards that are just little traffic calming around a, a couple of schools. And those types of things don't always go noticed, and they weren't in your presentation, but I noticed them. They're all around the city, so thank you. The, you know, the gun range, you know, we can just go on and on, everyone, the, the LED lighting and, and the precision of that lighting, the pickleball courts, it's great. And I've never voted against any of them, you know, I, it's, it's, it's not just, you know how proud I am of the pavement condition index of the of the city. If you walk, if you drive through a city, you can tell when you drive through Costa Mesa that you're in Costa Mesa by the condition of the streets. And you can tell, by the way, definitely from Huntington Beach, definitely from Santa Ana, and even sometimes from Newport, our rich cousins toward the coast. We have nicer streets in many cases than Newport. It's amazing. It's amazing the work that your department does. One of the things that we've talked about in the past is, and, and this came to mind, it's referenced in a little bit. It's the second bullet on page six of the staff report where you talk about citywide tree maintenance. So we're a tree city. We have a lot of trees, 25,000 trees. I think it's very important to not only continue our maintenance, but to double down on that. And one thing we've been talking about a bit is getting a report, I think this is going to come from the city attorney's office, a report for all the claims that we get. We get a lot of claims that are in our reading folder. I think it's section two of every, of every consent calendar, consent calendar item number two. We see the claims, but we never see how they're resolved. And, and I think, seeing how they are resolved, my hypothesis is that we pay a good amount of claims for trees falling. And I'm not being critical, there's 25,000 trees, for goodness sakes. Trees falling, people tripping on roots, roots in the, what do you call it? In the, in, in the sewers. Although we're a tree city, trees cause all kinds of issues, including public safety issues. I'd like to just identify the cost of those trees and so we can justify spending maybe even more money on the maintenance because I think it's very important. It's important to have a tree city, and it's important to maintain those trees correctly. I want to follow up on a question that was asked by Councilmember Bealy. And I didn't get the, if he, if he got the answer, I didn't write it down right, I'm sure. Okay, so on the, on the can, in 20, in 2425, what is the number that we would be below the can if we go with the recommendation of the staff? What is the number we would be below the can in 2425?
If it were to do the partial waiver, it would be the $2.9 million that we're asking for.
2.9 million?
Correct.
Okay. And what about in 25 and 26? How far below the can would we be?
Currently, at this moment, since we're still finalizing the final numbers, we're looking at about $6.6 million.
Okay, so over those two years then, if I'm doing my math right, we would be $9.5 million under the can.
Correct.
Okay. So, again, this is homework. Don't do it tonight. Don't try to do it orally, okay? I'd like to see, and, and I, I'm going to need this if I'm going to vote, to deviate from the can. We throw around partial waiver, we throw around waivers, whatever. In fact, there's no discussion of waivers in the can ordinance. The word doesn't appear in the ordinance. I'll read from it. Emergency exception. In the following circumstances, the city need not comply with the requirements set forth in the sections, the can section, subject to supermajority approval of the entire city council. And then it's got the circumstances, and we talked about it. One is our general fund falls below the reserve requirements, which it doesn't. And so then we're, we're into prong two. It's, it's disjunctive. It says or. An economic downturn, downturn, natural disaster, emergency, or other unforeseen circumstances. Now, when I read that, the, the concern that I have is the adjective unforeseen and the word other, right? Because you could read that and say that the economic downturn, which apparently we're relying on, needs to be unforeseen. Certainly, I think that would be the case for 2425. I'm not 100% sure it is for 2526. So I'd just like some analysis of that. Also, the subsection C says, in the event the provision is applied, the city shall develop a plan to replenish the asset funds for the amount exempted. So what, what I'm going to need to vote on this is either a plan or an analysis of the city attorney probably working with the, with the finance director to, you know, to, to make me understand this language a little bit better. I mean, in other words, what does a plan look like? When does it have to happen? Does the plan have to happen before we vote? Can it happen after we vote? If after we vote, when? Those are all the questions I have. And like I say, please don't attempt to answer them. Now, I, I would like that to be in writing in a staff report, something that goes to the public, not an attorney-client memo, because I think it's important for the public to understand what we're doing here. I don't remember supporting the can ordinance. I, I'm trying to figure out when it was enacted. It's, it seems to say 2015. This is before I was on council. The folks I ran against were on council. But it's the law of the land, and so we need to provide a high amount of respect for it until it's not the law of the land. Okay? With a couple other questions. Just on a question about what something means in the staff report. See if I can find it. Oh, before I get to that, could you go to slide three, please? Okay. So slide, slide three is for the 2425 adopted budget. And I'm just using this by way of example. It's got the general fund, and then it's got the, the salaries and benefits, and it's got maintenance and operations, fixed assets and so forth and so on. We, we approve on, at almost every single meeting, we approve contracts, right? One time, somebody asked me this question, they go, when we were talking about, this is back in a, in a different political time, we were talking about employees and so forth, and, and this all goes all the way back probably to 2012, when we were talking about outsourcing, and back when that was a big discussion. And it was like, outsourcing and contracts is a huge expense of the city of Costa Mesa. I'd like to see it analyzed, right? I'd like to, because right now, it seems like it's binary. We're talking about, you know, some, all these, today's topic of the day is the, the capital improvement projects. We're going to talk about, when we talk about the budget next, we've already, it's already been discussed, some type of a hiring freeze or, or cutting vacant positions or something like that. That's going to be presented to us in the future. We haven't talked about that piece that we see on a monthly, a couple times a month, usually when we're approving these contracts. I happen to know that most of the contracts have out clauses. So if there's any contracts that we've approved in the past that are going to be budgeted for that we decide are superfluous in retrospect, after now understanding the budget crisis that we're in, I'd like to have the ability to look at those contracts and remove them for the budget, and that would maybe free up an opportunity to put some of these capital improvement projects back in the budget. I don't have any in mind, but I'd like it to be isolated so I understand what they are, and the council has that information. There was one specific question I had, and I will find it. By the way, Councilmember Pettis, or sorry, Jeff, I loved your presentation. And I will say this is, I'm going to, I'll tell you outside the meeting, I'll read to you my Calvin Coolidge quote about persistence, but that was the first step in persistence. Keep at it, okay? I appreciate the effort. Okay, on, on section, on, on page 33 of the staff report? Not the staff report, I'm sorry. Obviously, I mean the PowerPoint. Okay, there's an asterisk. It looks like it modifies capital improvement general fund, and it reads funded by prior year general fund transfers. What does that mean?
For the last couple of years, we've been allocating the full can. We also have allocated partial of the can that, from the funds that we received from ARPA, for example. ARPA was provided to us because of general fund revenue loss. We applied the 5% of the ARPA for the revenue loss towards the can to ensure that we're maintaining compliance with the can, since the revenue losses would occur during the ARPA. So those funds were available, they dropped into the general, the reserves for the capital improvement. They came into the general fund and are eligible to be utilized from the reserves of the capital improvement fund.
Okay. The Pedestrian Safety Festival looks great. I think it's great. Do we have any schedule for that?
Mr. Mayor, at this point, we don't have a schedule. We are, it's a federal project, so we are working to get authorization from the federal government before we issue proposals and get consultants working on that. So we are hoping we'll have an answer from federal government in the next three to four months, and then we'll proceed.
Okay. So when you say proposals, are we going to do like RFPs for people to run it, or what are we going to do?
It's a big undertaking, so we think we need help from outside consultants to help organize the, the events. So there are four scheduled events as part of that project, so it's to get that help.
Okay. I have a suggestion. So it just so happens, it's just, you know, coincidental that on Sun, yeah, Sunday in Dana Point, they're doing a thing called redo, redo market. It's almost, it's almost exactly what could be done here. It's really great with vendors and everything. They do it in Dana Point. That's on Sunday. I've been to it, it's great. They also had it on the 14th and 15th of February at the fairgrounds. So we have some information on redo market. It was, when I went there last year, it was spectacular, and I think it would work out great. But, I mean, there might be other games in town, but that's the best I've seen. And I met with the operator, guy named Randy, great guy. So if anybody has nothing to do on Sunday and want to go down to Dana Point, that's a, it would be good to see that. What else do I have? There must be something else. Oh, and obviously, I mean, I don't need to tell you this, I'm sorry. I'm just going to say it because I started my sentence. Make sure to, you know, work with Triangle Square and the courtyards to make sure that they get the best bang for their buck. In Dana Point, those merchants that surround the redo market were reluctant at first because they thought they would take business away from them, but they, it's been very successful for the, you know, the retail storefront merchants. All right. I think, I think that's, oh, one other thing. Councilmember, or sorry, Jeff and Manny both mentioned the idea of expediting, getting approvals through and so forth and so on. And I've, I've commented on that before, but I just read something on the internet about Laguna Beach, making some real progress on that. And so maybe we can touch base with the leadership at Laguna Beach and see if there's any, anything, you know, we can steal from them in that regard. That's all I have.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry, I had a, just a clarifying question. So you, you had asked, I want to make sure I understand what you were asking. You had asked about looking at like services contracts where we're outsourcing work? Can you just clarify what, what their request was?
Yeah, so not just our outsourcing, yeah, that's a good qualification. I'm just saying that there's a lot of services contracts for, you know, there's many examples. I'm just pulling some out of a hat, like our facilities, master plan, our, you know, whatever consultants that we've hired. We hire tons of consultants all the time.
Are you just looking at, like, for a list of the?
All the people.
Professional services contracts that are active?
For example, we have a, a contract, contracts that, that provide additional support to public works. Maybe we don't need those if we're cutting the public works projects. I don't know. It's like, how can we look at those projects and say, sorry, the consultant contracts? And say, are there any consultant contracts that we could pull back on so that we could deploy those, those resources into projects or, you know, or employees?
Just for clarification, though, I, I do want to state that departments' operating budgets are pretty tight. So any of those savings, if there is some, and I'm going to speak up for public works, they do have close to 100 capital projects. I can't see them reducing any of those contracts. Same would go with development services, for example, where they do use those types of contracts to help facilitate and expedite some other projects. I don't think it would be significant enough to be able to backfill some of these capital projects, and it would be a pretty lengthy administrative work to get that done.
Mr. Mayor, most of our contracts for design, for example, are for ongoing projects. So we don't have a contract for future projects, for example. We have contracts for projects that are in progress, so unless we have specific projects that we want to defer, then, you know, it makes it easier to bring that. But, but we have quite a few contracts of projects that are ongoing.
And Mayor, I'll add also that before we bring the budget to the council for consideration, I go through a pretty torturous, probably for the department heads, process with them, literally line item by line item when it comes to our consulting contracts. And looking at that, how often do we need them? Do we use them? Do we expend them? What else can we do? What about when we fill positions? And then we put them out to bid probably every three to five years, sometimes even sooner, to make sure that we're always getting the best pricing, or we piggyback on a neighboring city if they've already done that. I think we've squeezed a good amount of juice out of the consultant contract area. I think any further cuts there would probably hurt council priorities or any of the ongoing projects that we're currently working on, to be honest.
Thanks. Okay, any other comments? Okay, we're adjourned.